Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the September 8, 2025, Twalton City Council regular meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda tonight is our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilor Gonzalez. Our flag is way over there. That brings us to announcements. And our first announcement tonight is a proclamation declaring the month of September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Twalton. Council President Pratt.
All right. Whereas September marks National Preparedness Month, the annual campaign to remind everyone that preparing for emergencies and disasters can keep them, their families, and their communities safe. And whereas disasters often strike quickly with little or no warning, and residents might be forced to evacuate neighborhoods, schools, and work sites, or be confined to homes. And whereas the challenges posed by climate change, such as more intense storms, heat waves, drought, wildfires, and extreme flooding could significantly alter the types and magnitudes of hazards faced by communities. And whereas preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of the city of Twalton, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas National Preparedness Month creates a significant opportunity for every resident of the city of Twalton to reflect and act on shared responsibility, to be prepared. And whereas the city supports and encourages participation in the Twalton Community Emergency Response Team, also known ASERT, so our community can be prepared, trained, and respond to emergencies. And whereas we commit as a community to nondiscrimination and equitable participation in planning for and responding to disasters. And whereas individuals, neighborhoods, businesses, and communities can all take steps to increase their resilience and look out for one another when major emergencies or disasters strike. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twalton that September 2025 is National Preparedness Month, and encourages all businesses and residences to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared community. Introduce and adopt this eighth day of September 2025.
Thank you. Item number two is a proclamation declaring-
Mayor, excuse me. There is a presentation from staff.
There is a presentation. All right. How do you know that? Come on up. All right. Hello, Lindsay.
Tia, pass the proclamation. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lindsay Marshall, management analyst in Public Works. So, as we just heard, it is Preparedness Month, and just like every other month, it has a named thing, right? It's meant to help us remember that this is a thing that we should be doing. And we prepare all the time, thinking about, like, going out for the day with my young children. I prepare by, do I have enough water? Do I have enough snacks to make sure we can have a pleasant day? If you go on vacation, you know, you're like, I think ahead and do I, what if I'm hot? What if I'm cold? And you prepare all these different options. So preparedness, to me, is really just thinking ahead in a variety of different ways. And there's a lot of different avenues to take to do that. It's preparedness for a day or two, or three days, or two weeks, or even three months, right? If we have a major disaster, it's going to take a while for services to get back up. Even if we have a power outage, we have candles and batteries for our head lamps. So it's just that little reminder to think ahead and take a little action to think ahead and to make sure that you are prepared for whatever comes up and that you have enough snacks. So, there you go. And I think we, and you'll hear from our CERT team later, but we have some of our wonderful CERT team members here to, I believe, accept the proclamation. Yes. So I will go ahead and bring them up and we can do our photo shoot.
All right.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to item number two, a proclamation declaring September 11 as 9/11 Remembrance Day, and this will be read by Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor, for the honor of getting to read this. I know this is something you usually read and reflect on the friends that you have and that you've lost. And I just wanted to say thank you for your service and that of your friends. City of Twalton proclamation, whereas nearly 3,000 people were killed on September 11, 2001, in New York City, Pennsylvania, and Washington DC as a result of unprovoked and cowardly terrorist attacks. And whereas we pay tribute to the men and women who perished and reflect on the bravery and courage of our civilian and military first responders and emergency personnel for their quick and selfless actions. And whereas it is also important to remember the countless families who were forever changed by the loss of a loved one because of these horrendous attacks. And whereas this September marks the 24th anniversary of that fateful day, which renewed patriotism throughout the nation and spurred American citizens to civic action. And whereas throughout the state of Oregon, individuals, organizations, and communities will gather on this 24th anniversary and honor our nation and the memory of those who lost their lives on September 11, 2001. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that Twalton recognizes September 11, 2025 as September 11 Remembrance Day. In the city of Twalton, all residents are invited to remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly and without cause taken from them. Introduce and adopted this eighth day of September 2025, city of Twalton, Oregon. And I think we can also, at the Veterans Plaza, thanks to the amazing work of our arts committee, see the work that the gentleman, the artist, I forget his name, who was selected and did the remembrance at the 9/11 site in New York City, has also art displayed here in our own community, so we could go to the Veterans Plaza and look at the flames of eternal flame, I think I believe it is, and reflect there if you so choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hillier. As Council Hillier said, on 9/11, remember the victims and also the first responders, the first responders who came without question, and the volunteers who all appeared there to help out with the impact. And some of these first responders and volunteers are now dealing with ongoing health issues, and they continue to battle those health issues, especially the firefighters and police officers, that we got to remember these folks and honor them and never forget what they did that day and the days afterwards. Some programs are being cut, health-wise, funding for these folks who are impacted. And we're just going to make sure we continue to advocate to keep those funds in place and keep those programs in place, because we got to honor the folks who've done this. And, you know, when we talk about CERT, you know, preparedness, these folks went in there with no second thoughts to help out, you know, the fellow New Yorkers. So again, on 9/11, please reflect on those two items. Item number three, a proclamation declaring September 15 through October 15, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month. We're going to have this read in Spanish by Council Reyes and then in English by Council Gonzalez. Council Reyes.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to read this in my native language, my first language is Spanish, to honor my fellow Hispanic Americans.
Thank you for your effort. Are we reading English now? Whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas what began in 1960 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15 and ending October 15. And whereas this year's theme, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities and stronger nation. And whereas we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society, while also rededicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face. And whereas Hispanic continues their rich tradition of significant and diverse contribution to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of the city of Twalton. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city, proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that September 15 through October 15, 2025 is Hispanic Heritage Month. In the city of Twalton, and encourage all residents to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommit ourselves to shared future of healthy, peaceful, safe, sustainable communities for all. Introduce and adopt it this eighth day of September 25, city of Twalton, Oregon.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. I'll take those folks who are here in the room first and then go to folks on Zoom. And right now I have one person signed up, but you don't have to be signed up if you're in the room. So the first person is Mr. O'Neal.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I appreciate the opportunity again to address the city council on my personal and community concerns. I've got an excerpt taken from an email dated the 5th of September from the Principal Engineer, Community Development, to the developer of Norwood Townhomes. For the Horizon Partition Project, the next step is for you, your team, to submit public improvement plans for the full protected engineered in accordance with the appropriate codes and standard land use conditions. We will not provide piecemeal reviews outside the context of the full project. That being said, this does not appear to meet the land use condition of a minimum six-foot planer strip. Where a narrower planer strip is requested to preserve mature trees at a specific location, justification on the plan start will be provided for narrowing the planer strip at those specific locations. And that's the end of that. I don't understand the premise of not taking care of this central issue before completing the comprehensive development plan. The developer, as I see it, has met the need to protect Norwood trees and still address the city's conditions. Question, who at the city is going to take responsibility for advising and directing the city's city staff at these matters? Is it the city manager or community development director? I've seen more and more of our older trees disappear in the years I've been here, and now we're looking at more of the same. I'm not what you call a tree hugger, but I do believe that we need to protect and keep our natural resources, of which trees are a very vital point. The tree growth on the west end of Norwood is still in jeopardy. My personal understanding on the difference between the developer's placement of the curb, sidewalk, and PGE utility easement, planer area, developer's latest submission gives better protection and preservation of the tree growth on the south side of Norwood and still meets development's conditions. The conditions are allowed to be modified to protect and preserve wetlands or trees. The city's direction requires more area and places PEG utility easement closer to the trees and will not protect and preserve the old growth of trees. Not just my opinion, but the expert opinion of a certified arborist that you heard from last council meeting. I'm sorry to go over, but I need-
Yeah, wrap it up, though.
The request tonight is the city to look at a better, bigger concern of protecting our trees. When the trees on the west end of Norwood are lost due to all planer strips and things, it will still be a tree city USA. Who will have the responsibility and the negative PR when we lose these trees? I believe that the city will directly be responsible and justifiably so if these actions aren't taken to preserve the trees. Thanks for your time and attention to this very visible community issue.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make public comment tonight?
I'm only just waiting.
Okay. Mr. Allen, you can go ahead.
Yep, thank you very much. I'm clicking my video, but it doesn't seem to be coming on, but that's all right. I'll keep talking. My name's Ken Allen, and I'm the property owner at 9300 Southwest Norwood Road. I'm back again talking about the tree preservation, of course, south of Norwood Road. I first wanted to start off with two great things that are happening in the community that Horizon and myself are a part of. One of them is we have relaunched the Hispanic church service on Sundays at our Sagert campus. And this last Sunday, we had over 100 people, and I believe that'll grow to be, you know, closer to 500 folks over time, like we've had before, pre-COVID. So that's an exciting announcement. And the other one has to do with our soccer fields that are open to the community. We are announcing a partnership with Willamette United Soccer Club, to where they're going to come in and help restore the fields and then collectively provide practice and game facilities for the community at large. So just wanted to bring that to the attention, that Horizon and ourselves are doing as much as we can to be integrated into the community, not just a private school for, you know, the churchgoers or whatnot. Brings me my third point, and that has to do with the tree preservation. My question is, and I really want to give thanks to Community Development Director Mike McCarthy. Last time we were in front of you, he turned around, addressed the audience, and to you, council and mayor, and said, we are here to preserve the trees. But there's an absolute disconnect from my part. I'm seeing emails and talk that they're not accepting my plans. They're not accepting what we've designed, even though, as Danny just pointed out, that we have done that. And there's latitude for the city to do that. Now, I, my question is, who is responsible to bring the message from you guys, from the council and mayor, back to the city staff so they can understand the magnitude of this and that this is what the council wants, this is what the community wants? And as myself, as a, I call myself a friendly developer, that is what we want. And so I still can't believe I'm a developer fighting for the preservation of trees. I'm usually on the other side of it, trying to put roads in and houses and whatnot, and trying to preserve the best we can. So I'm pleading with you to give your staff directive on how to do this. You don't have to give them the technical advice. You just need to give them the authority to make something happen, because it's, it's not happening. And I don't want to keep being back here every two weeks and spending your valuable time. Do we need a proclamation? Do we need a support letter? What directive, what tool do you guys have to use that you can manage through the city manager or the community development director to direct the engineering staff? That's all I have, and I'll leave that as an open-ended question. And I do thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right. If you're in Zoom, go ahead and raise your hand if you want to provide public comment. Going, going. All right. As far as getting back to a question for Mr. Allen, it's, we've said it last time, the folks who are here, staff knows where we stand about saving trees. We don't have to make a proclamation. We don't have to keep rewriting it. City council and our city manager, as long as, as well as staff, know where we're at about saving trees. The process, I know, sometimes goes super slow, has to go back and forth, but I'm looking forward for the process to go through. But in our priorities and in our discussions with city staff, they all know where we stand, you know, save as many trees as we can, because we don't want to go through what we went last through, went through last time with Autumn Sunrise. With that, I'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda, those items are considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of August 25, 2025. And item number two, consideration of resolution numbers 5908-25, 5909-25, and 5910-25, accepting grant funds for traffic safety enforcement through the Oregon Department of Transportation. Would anyone on the council like an item from consent removed this evening?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports. Item number one, Twalton Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known ASERT, 2024-2025 Annual Report. Welcome. Welcome back, Lindsay.
And I have friends. I will, I don't know. I mean, snacks are really key. Let's see, and then I'll shoot back after, after I say some nice things about these incredible folks next to me. So just to tee this up, this is, these are some of the leaders of our community emergency response team. We've been a part of Twalton for a decade now, right? Just about. And we do support CERT financially, so they are by far the biggest piece of our community outreach for emergency preparedness and preparedness in general. And they, like, go here, they do classes every, twice a year. They're one of the, they're the only program in the area that continued on during COVID, which in of itself was an emergency, and do a really, really incredible amount of things for our community. They're at our events, they're everywhere. I had the pleasure of finally taking a, taking the CERT class this spring, so I'm officially CERT certified as of this spring. And I can't say enough good things about the amount of work that these folks do. They are volunteers, and the amount of time and effort and thoughtfulness that they put into their work for the Twalton community cannot go unsaid. So just really want to, yay for you guys. You guys are amazing, incredible to work with. And so I will let them tell you about all the really great things that they have going on. If you haven't taken a CERT class yet, I would encourage you to also become CERT certified, kind of cool green backpack that has lots of room for snacks. So, there you go.
Thank you, Lindsay. My name is Kathy Holland, for the record, and I'm the president of the Twalton CERT and HAM team. We have four of our directors here tonight who will be giving very brief special reports compared to the time and effort they put in. And I'm going to go ahead and have them introduce themselves. Andy, do you want to start? You need to talk to them.
Is there an on?
Yeah, it's on.
I'm Andy Wilson, Twalton resident since 2015.
John Carmody, Treasurer.
Heather Schlauchner, Director of Marketing and Membership.
Alan Parakini, Vice President.
Thanks, guys. If we got our slideshow, we'll go ahead and go to the next, oh, we've got control. Okay, which button? There it is. All right. This is our status report, and I'm leading with statistics because I'm an accountant by training. We're, this past has hosted, but we've planned, and it's the 13th this coming Saturday. And Heather will be speaking more about it. We have our in-person basic training, which we do twice a year. Right now, we have a class of 13, including one employee of the city. And as Lindsay, who is our wonderful liaison, she just went through our training and has access to our confidential members database, too. We, at this point, have 195 members, and 125 are active. To be active, you have to do four things a year. Now, we haven't gone through the audit. We'll probably lose a few people. But we have people leave, they move out of the city. Unfortunately, we've had funerals and that sort of thing. And then people decide it isn't for them. So we have kind of a flow going on. Right now, we have 83 licensed HAM operators, which is statistically very high for a CERT team. And we're expanding into GMRS, and right now we have 64 GMRS. You don't have to take a test. In fact, all of you could become GMRS licensed, yes. And you who wish, Andy and crew run a Sunday net for GMRS, so you have a chance to connect. And then we're expanding into what's called FRS, which is Family Radio Service, and we're- And we're starting a network of non-CERTs who don't have a license and have a limited range radio. We're following the plan that Lake Oswego has recently adopted. And then the mobilization requests that are standing, and this is where the city has asked us to help, is parking lot management, which is also attendee management. And we love working with Parks Department. They are fantastic people. Heidi and Judy or Julie are perfect to work with. We love it. The Blender Dash, Viva Tuolton, and the Punkin Regatta, which is coming up. Oh, back. Heather, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you for the time tonight for us to present to you. We shared with you the flyer that we've been circulating, and it's on Facebook and Twitter and Nextdoor and all over the place, hopefully. And our postcards, we've been handing out bilingual, and we've been trying to make all of our brochures and everything have different languages. And we will be having our third annual fair this weekend, this Saturday, at the library where we were also last year. And I think some of you came out for that, and I really hope that you can visit us again because it's an amazing day. As you see, our little CERT B is for our B city, so you can be ready, right? And also Onyx, the police dog, will be out visiting us that day. We also have, Tuolton Fire Department will come out. We might even get the Bearcat SWAT team truck out, I'm hoping, fingers crossed. But it's, it's really a whole group effort. The, the city of Tuolton has been an amazing help to us to make this fair really, really successful. And partnering, partnering with the library has been really great. What a great group of people to work with and in a wonderful space. And so we make it very kid-friendly, and Lindsay and I have been brainstorming ideas with bubbles and balloons and tattoos and all kinds of fun stuff for kids. And then, of course, their grownups get to learn a lot about emergency preparedness as well. So you see our flyers there and last year's pictures. We were packed to the gills in the community room. In fact, I had to remove some tables this year because it was so crowded in there. We had a really wonderful turnout. And you see Lindsay and the police department there with their motorcycle. And we hand out 200 free go bags to people as they enter. And so you see the little green backpacks there that everybody's wearing. And then as they go around to all the different preparedness exhibitors, they'll get, you know, free flashlights and emergency whistles and blankets and things that they can put in that bag. And it's just been a fabulous event, so we're looking forward to it growing every year.
Now, time for the radio, guys.
I'm here to give the update on the MCU, which is our Mobile Communications Unit. Currently, we have all of our solar cells installed. They're generating power to our batteries. We just had our fourth or fifth work party here at the yard here. We were able to get most of our radios operational, which we use the Regatta as one of our radio exercises. And I hand it off to Andy.
I have the other half of John's report. I want to go back to Kathy of the FRS radio system. Some of you may have had those little toy-type things growing up, but it really stands for Family Radio Service. And they are a very powerful tool for local neighborhoods because with them, you can talk just in your particular subdivision or across the street, or perhaps to another neighborhood group. Lake Oswego uses them to localize information because then you know about downed trees or power lines or cellular services are working here, they're not working there. They've had a lot of experience with that. We would like to do that. To do that, we want people to get an FRS radio. And when we have enough people, then we will have what we call a net control person in each neighborhood. And first person on starts talking. That person can in turn use a GMRS network to talk to us. And then we push information down, they push information up. And you can see we're building a picture of what's happening in our neighborhood in a crisis. The other thing we're doing is, in addition to the trailer, we are outfitting it with the ability to talk to Washington County areas, the emergency services and Sheriff's Department. We use them because they're the people who are going to be collecting information about what's happening in our community. We will submit our reports. We will ask for help. We will get status updates. And then we will in turn push that back down again, even down to the FRS radios if those people are listening. We're using a system called Radio Managing System. This allows us to send text messages over radio waves. We type them in on a laptop. They're converted to a sound wave. We go to a special gateway that Washington County will tell us to use when it's our turn. And then we'll also collect the messages coming back down and then we distribute them out. It's very efficient, and we will have two units set up to do this. And in addition to that, in our trailer, it also has four other kinds of radios. Two are AM radio bands, two are GMRS bands, and we also have the ability to talk on the FRS radios. The brands that we're using, for those people that are technical, we use YSU radios for our mobile operations. We use Signaling for our radio messaging system, and we use Radiody for our GMRS radios. And we love people who like to dink. If you're a little technical person and you don't mind dinking around, come play with us on Sunday nights, 8:00 and 8:30, and on Tuesday noon. And you can see the frequencies on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. This neighborhood net is taking time to set up, but all of you could be part of it. And CERT people just assume everything goes wrong. Radios, especially FRS radios, operate on batteries. So if the satellites are out of the sky or the cell towers don't work, that's really what radio, which is like 100, 200-year-old technology. And it has helped in desperate situations throughout the country, including North Carolina, which there was a group of HAMs who helped the FEMA people find where they were because they were lost because the Blue Mountains were real confusing. So radio people connect, and that, we thank these guys and our large volunteer network. What is, FEMA actually created the standards. FEMA is changing. We don't really know what's going to happen. Fortunately, the state of Oregon has started a robust Oregon Emergency Management CERT program. And the director is actually going to be at our fair this Saturday. They've created a handbook, which was mimics what FEMA had with a special consideration for what our dangers are in Oregon. And they've done a very good job of connecting all the unique programs throughout the state. But regardless of how you're set up, these are the kinds of things that we prepare for. This is the consequences. Power outages, cell phones, blocked roads, stores running out of stuff. So this is what we plan for. Then there's an increased risk due to climate change. Floods are flooding more. Power outages are going out for winds. Cell phone towers in Florida were gone. In North Carolina, they were gone. It, it, these winds are just record winds. They knock things down. And then the satellites get overwhelmed, and that's when we lose cell, cell coverage. So I'm here to report that Tuolton is still preparing. We have a wonderful relationship with the city staff. We're working to expand through the neighborhoods. We're using the CIOs. We're trying to get more business members. Right now, Lamb and Fujimi are our largest business members. And we have several people, we, we were at their safety, safety days and have signed up a bunch of people and helped them with their individual preparedness. Just a reminder of who we are. We're all volunteer. Cutting anyone's pay is not an option. We, we try to promote and encourage. When someone has an interest, they usually end up in charge. So we use the, we, we use the technique of not being perfect and allowing people to help us get more perfect. We greatly appreciate the support we have from the city of Tuolton. I've already mentioned it three times. But having conversations with other CERT programs where they don't have city support, well, it just, we wouldn't be where we are without it, to say the least. So Tuolton Neighborhood Ready is one of our most engaged, where we're actually trying to help individuals get ready. And I used the same slide last year, but that has how to get in touch. And then we have a free community limited seating at the library on the 27th from 10:00 to 12:00. This will be talking about individual preparedness. And the people presenting this have been refining the information for Tuolton now for the decade. And they have excellent material. It's well worth the two hours. Then you can go look at the library, enjoy a book. Okay, our CERT training, which is standard to 25 hours, and as you're going to hear from Allen in a minute, there's actually an additional six hours that is optional with the county that we've added on. And we cover those topics where, again, we have our, the same email. So any one of you want to email us, we'll be glad to hear from you. These are the projects for '25, '26. We respond to any requests the city sends us. We want to complete the Mobile Communication Unit, which we shared with you last year, which was funded principally by a federal grant for $10,000, and then we had $3,500 in donations. And then we're, we've added 2,000 of our operating to it. And we're doing all the labor ourselves. If you noticed that photo, oh, John, talk about the, did you get a chance to talk about what you did with the, with the power? You did.
Yeah, briefly.
We have power.
That's a big milestone.
It's a major milestone. We're going to have a porta potty in a separate tent. And I just want to remind you, Multnomah County spent $1 million on their mobile unit. And of course, it's all self-contained and has all that stuff, and it's got better spacing. We think Washington County spent a half a million. We're not sure. We've heard that. We spent $13,000, and what we do is we add canopies. The mobile party, potty unit has its own little tent. So, because we assume not all the people want to stand by a tree. So, anyway, enough on that. So those are the, those are the things we're planning to do. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Allen, who's been working on two of our new projects.
My apologies for having my back to half of you, but that's the way it goes. For several years before the COVID anesthesia took place, there was a countywide CERT training day. It's being revived this year for the first time, and it will be October 25th. 60 people will participate, split between Beaverton, Tygar, and us. And I'm forgetting the fourth city. Hillsborough. And it'll have five different, four different venues. One on triage, one on search and rescue, one on damage assessment, and one on the euphemistically described patient packaging. That doesn't mean that that's actually a term of art in the first aid community. It doesn't mean we're going to put people in boxes and stamp, put postage stamps on them. It's basically patient transportation. And so that'll be from, starting at 7:00 with breakfast and going until 4:00 o'clock. It's going to be a rugged day, rain or shine. So that's what's going to happen. And for several years, or several years ago, CERT did do some CPR training. It hasn't been in our wheelhouse for quite a while. For one reason, we don't have a trainer. So yours truly has taken the training process, and I'm now a certified trainer. And I would like to thank Alessa Kerr in the city for, first of all, she's allowing us to use the city's mannequins. And the chief is allowing us to use the police department training room. So we're hoping to have six people per class, six classes in the first six months, starting in October. And that, that will bring us to, it'll take us several years at that pace, but we may be able to get some additional trainers cooperating through Washington County. I'm helping them out this weekend with a training in King City. They'll help us out in the future. So that's what we're doing.
So, that's it. Any questions?
Questions or comments? That's President Pratt.
Oh, well, first of all, I have to thank you. I mean, you were very resilient to make it through COVID, hold this CERT team together. And when I, I talk to people in other cities, and a lot of cities don't have CERT things, and it amazes me, and they think it's the coolest thing. So I'm pretty proud of you guys that we can say our city has this great team. I was wondering, on the FRS radio that you said everybody could get, how would people go about finding out more?
Well, you can contact us, and we will give you the models that we recommend. But now, prices are changing due to tariffs and other things, but it's about $35 for two of them.
I haven't checked recently, but that is $29, too, and I kid you not, whatever they can get out of you. Okay, do not spend $100 on these radios.
And FRS has standard channels. And those channels are at a standard wattage. So they have limited range, but they have more range than we originally thought.
Okay, so if someone spent their $35 saying, "Got one of these radios," then what are?
Well, you contact Andy.
Send a note to our website. I'll reply, and I'll give you the particulars, but in, in summary, it would be this. On a certain day and time, let me pick on, say, Monday at 12:30 in the PM. We will adjust this during, as we get more people. You would stand out there, probably in your driveway. It's not going to work well in your house, okay? And you would turn it to channel, let's pick three. And that's all you have to do. Put three on the little LED printer. You don't have to do any frequencies. And you announce your name, and you say what street you're on. You just checked in.
First name, only your first name.
So always just use that. And don't, don't give us your street address. And for privacy purposes, let's not get too much into names. That's why we're sticking to first names.
Gotcha.
Okay, because these are public channels. So what we would ideally build is a neighborhood that has one or two people every several blocks. You'll be able to hear them. And then as you go through, we will tap on each one of you saying, "We hear you," okay? And then we'll go back and say, "Do you have anything to report?" And then each of you will be called on in turn to what you report. This is real-world stuff, okay? You don't just get on and start pushing. We all have to be patient, and then you'll be given the time to make your little status report. Could be short or long. You could say, "Beautiful day." Or you could say, in an emergency, what particular problems are developing on your street and who's affected. We're primarily interested in personal safety, then property. So put those two things first. That's an example. You just have to sort of check in. If you miss out, try to check in the following week.
And if, so I just watched that documentary, which is horrific, on Katrina, and that was the big issue, is they didn't know what was happening because there was no communication system. So this is a really great thing to have in place.
It's not just Katrina. All, all emergencies, an absence of information creates rumors. Our contact point here in Tuolton are the police department. Our rules are, we don't tell anybody anything unless it's approved by the public relations that are controlling information. So we are not a source of rumors. However, if there is a rumor, we'll share it. If we can reach the police department, but we will share it with the county so that they know what people are saying. So a lot of our communication is upward. Information about property damage, that kind of thing, and also rumors, because rumors are bad. Facts are good. Facts are good. The other thing is that each neighborhood will have a channel. And that's one of the reasons why you're coordinating with Andy. So, if you stand in your driveway and you're on channel three, we hope, we have identified one other person in your neighborhood who will be standing at the same time on channel three. And whoever responds first is in charge. It's a different program than our net-directed, where we call out for people who are on our net, which is the way we run the GMRS net and the ham net. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And it's still under development. Go ahead, correct me.
I'm sorry, you get me all excited.
No, you can correct me.
What will happen, as she pointed out, and I'm glad she did, your neighborhood would be channel three. Okay? Perhaps the mayor's neighborhood is on channel six. You would have to turn your radio to six to hear what's going on there. So, this is how we keep things local. You're welcome to listen to channel six. It may be helpful if you do.
If you can hear it.
If you can hear it. Beyond this, the GMRS net that we are, is now functional, extends you to the ability to hear everything going on across all the city neighborhoods. Again, these are public channels. You can get yourself a GMRS radio, and if you don't transmit, you can listen in to us. We do this every Sunday night at 8:30. And we have a number of people. Cedar Mill checks in, Newburgh checks in on the GMRS net, because they're close enough and because we're functioning. So, they get to practice, and they get to share information. And that's, that's the price of admission. Be willing to share, be willing to listen, and help out your neighborhood.
Do the FRS radios will be these local things, and then do the GMRS group communicate to a further range?
Yeah, thanks to the city.
That's a description.
We have a GMRS repeater. Which is sitting on top of the operations building. So, the operations building has a backup generator. So, if that generator's running, even if power's down, that GMRS repeater will work. We also have a ham repeater, and it's in the Norwood area on top of the water tower. It, it has a generator, but it has to be started. So, we start with the basics, which is FRS and GMRS and simplex ham, because we're not sure that the repeaters are working. Once we determine the repeaters are working, then we can reach all over the Northwest, California. I mean, this is, this is ham. They talk to the satellites. They, they talk to the space station.
And you can talk to the space station, if you're excited about that, or if you have grandchildren that just love that thing.
Yeah. If you have, you know, grandchildren in the Philippines, you can reach them.
Oh, wow.
So, ham is very powerful. FRS, not so powerful. But it's cheap, and you don't need a license. Any other questions?
Council Brooks.
Thank you very much. And I think that it's a really important, and always becoming more important, group. And it's great to see the group growing in not just numbers, but capacity and ideas, and how it's being networked together is really exciting. So, I just want to congratulate everybody. When you were discussing the plan from Lake Oswego that you were using, it's funny, because when I was on the consortium, I remember when they were having problems with the ice storm and the water, and the guy that was in charge of Public Warp was stuck in his house because the tree was down, and he couldn't get out of his driveway, right? So, that was quite a lot of coordination that happened to make sure that water wasn't lost back then. And I'm just curious if that plan, if we, do we have a plan, or can we integrate? I guess this is more of a staff question. Can we understand what that plan is, and then integrate it into our city and have a city plan of our own?
The city does have an emergency plan. We submitted our mobilization instructions to the city to add us in. But the process of that happening, kind of with Clay Reynolds' retirement, kind of stopped. But are, they have a copy of our plan, and we have a copy of their plan. We'd like to be integrated, but it's, takes time and staff, and it hasn't been done yet.
Yeah, we can check on what the status of that is.
I think that would be important. And especially be, if we're getting close, it'd be nice to be able to announce it or have an announcement date for the fair.
Right.
And just keep everybody up to date. And like I said, I think that the work is so important, and becomes more important every day. So, I really appreciate it, and am interested in learning more. I won't be able to be there Saturday, because I have a previous engagement. Oh, and then the other thing I wanted to say is, this year, I've seen the neighborhood signs up more than I've ever seen before, and they're in places that I see, which sometimes I think there's things posted, but maybe not on my route, because I'm just bugging around in little different places. So, I just want to appreciate also the strategy around marketing this year, and being able to see all the information.
Our, our signs still don't have the large print requested by the, by certain members of the planning group. We still have tiny print, so, but we recycled last year's signs, so we had 180 signs.
Yeah. I've seen them, and I'm walking a lot, so I can walk right up.
You can only read them if you're walking.
Anyway, thank you.
Council Hillier's.
Thank you. I always learn something, and I'm always determined that I'm going to pull my little, I think it's the GMRS radio that I have. I'm hoping I can still find it and connect with you. But I just wanted to share with you that there is a group in our community called Tuolton Together that hosts a Safety Town every year. And as part of that program, they, it's, there's separate camps for incoming kindergarteners and second graders, and then third through fifth graders. And they teach the kids about go-bags and different things. And so, it would be a fun thing. I don't know, I know you're all volunteer, and you're all very busy, but it'd be a fun connection for, for you two nonprofits to maybe do some connecting, and maybe especially at the third through fifth grade one, they do what's called, well, now I can't think, but they're projects that the kids work on all throughout the week, mastery projects, goodness, mastery projects. And it might be, the radios especially, might be a great way for them to think about some of those things. So, if you're interested in a connection with that agency, I'm happy to make that. And I would make a better connection on Saturday, but for, I will not be able to be at your event either, and I apologize.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about doing that, and I think we got it on the list. So, I think it'd make sense.
And we also, we had a group last year with Tuolton High School. We created a teen, teen CERT program through Tuolton High School. And this whole last year, we did a course for the high school students, and it was like an after-school club, you know, instead of ski club. It was CERT club. So, we're really interested in integrating this information into the kids' programs. So, I would love that connection.
But like all programs, we lost the volunteer who was coordinating it, and that's why it's not on the list for this year. And we're, you know, we had a teacher and a group that was interested. But again, we can only do when we have, do what we can do when we have a volunteer willing to lead it. Any other questions?
Just got a quick one on the, following up on Council Hillier's comment about GMRS. Do you ever, once in a while, have like a brush the spider webs off for pressure on it? Because I do fire mine up like once a quarter, but one of them works fine, one does not. And I think it's a programming issue, something fell out of whack, but.
If we had a get-on-the-air session for GMRS here in this building on a Saturday, is that something that would appeal to you?
Yeah. Especially if what you said, 60, 80. I mean, most of us probably, I know when I listen, there's the same set of people who do it, and it's definitely not 60, 80 people from us. Just to dust off the cobwebs and, you know, make sure that your stuff is working, you're charging it right. Make sure you have the, the special antenna that reaches a little further.
Yeah, we, we need to get on the air.
Yeah, we have a lesson planned. We just haven't had a discussion about when can we do it.
Okay. But, but we will also problem-solve one-on-one. And your technical problem with the other one might be due to a manufacturing problem. These radios are not particularly expensive, and things happen to them. But we, we could do diagnostics, too.
That would absolutely be part of it. It's no fun to get there, and it's busted.
Right. That's why I tried both of them.
I had a volunteer throw his radio at somebody trying to reach, so mad, his radio wouldn't work.
Anything else? Well, thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you for the time and the money. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to general business. Item number one on general business is consideration of Resolution Number 5911-25, supporting the replacement of the Washington County Cooperative Library Services, WCCLS, Local Option Levy Ballot Measure 34-345. There's, I do not believe, yeah, there's no staff presentation recall. This was a request from Rob Drake and a series of vocal library supporters, asked us to support the levy, and we voted to do that. So, any discussion on this resolution? And any, everyone cleared out, so I assume there's no one in the room who would like to speak pertaining to Resolution 5911-25? Is anyone in Zoom? Cleared out? Okay. So, with that discussion, our motions on Resolution Number 5911-25.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 5911-25. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 5911-25. Any discussions on those motions? This is a roll call vote, so I'll go ahead and start with Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Looks like it's unanimous. Resolution Number 5911-25 is adopted. That moves us to items removed from consent. We had no items removed from consent. Next item is council communications. Any council communications? Council Brooks?
I just wanted to let people know that I received an email about the manager for the water consortium position being open. So, if anybody wants any further information on that, feel free to reach out to me, and I can forward you the job description and what's happening. The Water Consortium is the organization that comes together for the, all the drinking water organizations. So, it's a really important organization, and dovetails nicely with the CERT. And that's it. Thank you.
Any other, Council Hillier?
I hope this is the appropriate place. It's not a communication. I'd like to bring up a topic that I'm very concerned about, and would like to see if there is some energy around this topic. The topic is the liquor license application for the city of Tuolton. And I bring this up because a business that, at our last council meeting, this body decided to give, because I, I understand all the implications. If we had said no, I, I get all that, that they would have still gotten it through the OLCC. But this business has no trained people to serve alcohol. They just have alcohol sitting out for anyone. They have no food. They have none of the rules that the OLCC states. And I would like to see if there is some energy, or if it's even an allowed thing, to alter our liquor license application. Number one, to consider a higher price, because per capita in the city of Tuolton, we have more places that liquor is able to be purchased than almost anywhere else in our nation. And, okay, New Orleans is kind of separate. But it, on the application, it says, "Type of business." Okay, great. "Type of food served." Well, in the OLCC rules, it very clearly states that the responsibility is to have food service requirements. The business with on-premise consumption licenses must always make at least five different meals available. They have to have service hours, which fine. Implement strict ID checking procedures to prevent sales to minors, which, if you've not been trained, these people are not doing at all at multiple places, including nail salons I see all the time in our community. So, anyway, I would just like to see us add some different questions on the liquor license application that actually have something to do with what happens, you know, with the OLCC is asking for, so that they have some onus of compliance, or at least knowledge of the rules. And also add on here when, and have an update in the renewal application, when people are being trained for responsible beverage service, and those sorts of things.
First, I'm going to pump this over to Kevin. The application, is the application something we generate, or is this a boilerplate from OLCC? Do you know? Or do you need time to research?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd probably need a little bit more time to research, but we do have a liquor license ordinance. That's in Chapter 902. And I think that we do have the ability, the city does have the ability to process applications and conduct investigations necessary to make a reasoned recommendation to the OLCC. It's the OLCC that determines ultimately if a liquor license is going to be approved or denied, and any potential violations of that state license. But as far as what our application contains, I think that it would, an application would necessarily contain what the ordinance in Chapter 902 requires. And we could certainly take a look at that. I'll need to get more information and, and determine if there's anything else we can add. And I think Council Hillier mentioned maybe increasing the amount of the fees that applicants pay. Generally, we have some flexibility there, but fees should only be in an amount necessary to process the application in relation to the ordinance. You don't want to have the allegation that it's an unlawful tax instead of a fee. So, we can certainly take a look at that, too.
All right. And I don't know if this is a question for you or for Captain Rankin. As far as enforcement, as Council Hillier was saying, of servers licenses and training, that's more an OLCC responsibility and not the Tuolton Police? So, how's that figure into it, if you want to come up, Captain? Just as an FYI, so we know. Because I know there's fuzzy area there.
Captain Rankin with the Tuolton Police Department. Yeah, so, we can assist with the OLCC investigators, but the OLCC does do primarily liquor enforcement laws. We can refer to them in specific cases. Hopefully, that's answering the question as far as enforcement. But generally, OLCC enforcement is done by OLCC investigators who are sworn investigators.
All right. So, with that, how do people feel about Council Hillier's request?
Well, I have a question to Kevin, because if that came before us, we've kind of all been told that OLCC is going to approve these anyway, so it's kind of, that's why it's on consent agenda. But if we said no, and it went to OLCC, would they consider our concerns?
Council President, I, I think officially, if you look at the OLCC's website, having a local recommendation is part of their licensing process. So, I imagine if you were to ask them, they would, they would tell you that yes, that is a very important consideration. And it's the information that is derived from a local investigation that might more fully inform their licensing process. So, if, and we have, if you look at our Chapter 902, you, you do have the ability to make a, to take it off consent and actually have a due process type hearing, where you have a hearing onto whether a recommendation is going to, a favorable recommendation is going to be made or not. The applicant has the ability to come and testify and, and provide information. But it's the information that would be derived or gained from that particular hearing that might further inform the OLCC's decision. So, if there's just a, for instance, a, a denial of a local recommendation without anything more, that doesn't help the OLCC much.
So, if we have concerns, can we ask for a hearing, or how would that work?
Yes, there is a process for.
Well, that's the problem. So, this, the one entity that's being discussed, you don't know there's a concern until after they've established this liquor stuff, and they're not following. So, I guess I would at least be in. So I guess I would at least be in support of looking at our application and making sure some of these items are clearly stated on there. So they're agreeing to that and they're being informed because sometimes that's probably the case, too, that they don't know the rules.
That, that's correct. We can, I think we can look at maybe having more information provided in our application process. And I think if I'm not mistaken, there's an annual review of liquor licenses. So if there's an issue with a particular licensee, you will have, you will have another opportunity to review that. Like I said, we make recommendations to the OLCC. We don't actually approve or deny liquor licenses. We make that recommendation. That is part of the OLCC's process when, when they go through the process of either approving or denying a liquor license at the state level.
Council Brooks?
I had a clarifying question, too, that I'm not sure who it goes to. But when we're talking about a salon or a place that does like complimentary glass of wine or something like that, is that what we're talking about?
Anyone who is applying for a liquor license that's serving to anyone in their business, I'm talking, I'm talking about them whether people are paying for the liquor or they are getting it complimentary. They still have to have a liquor license. They have to have responsible beverage service training. They have to have a variety of things. And we, I guess my concern, Councilor Brooks, is that we're not kind of calling that out on our application and asking what it says, what type of food, food service hours. Like for instance, one that I voted no for this last time, nothing is even listed. No breakfast, lunch, no dinner. No, it just, it just says, if, if there's something that's going to happen, we'll order it. Like so, but they have alcohol all the time.
That's not quite my question, but I appreciate.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I, I'm just curious if the rules are the same for a liquor establishment that is, that that's their business profiting from that? Are they the same rules around serving food and everything for a salon?
There's different statuses.
Yeah, I believe there's different types or statuses of licenses at the state level.
So I, my request would be around this conversation to have more information regarding the status level of different, because I don't feel like I'm an expert at all around licensing, which kind of dovetails into the concern. Since we are making these decisions, I think being informed is always good. And then we can save ourselves time and energy if there's already information out there that handles these questions or if there's some things that we should be concerned about. But I, I wouldn't want to make any decisions or, until I better understood the whole levels and all that kind of stuff. That would be my, that'd be my request. Because I don't want it to be unfriendly compared to other cities here, you know.
Yeah, I, I would like to have more information because what if they just, they're having a license because maybe they'll host a party where they will have a complimentary wine or something while they're doing their nails? I, I mean, I just don't want to like stop people from, from having that ability to do that. Maybe they're not selling drinks or alcohol, but they're, they want to have it as a way of, in case they have a party at their business. I can see, you know, like spas and they might serve wine or champagne and they might need this license to operate or do some kind of party. That's my thought process. So I don't, I don't know. I don't want to be too, I want to be friendly, too. So I want to see the difference before I even like think about changing anything in our, in our applications.
All right, so I'm hearing, and this is again a staff capacity issue. Is there a way Kevin and his department could just put together, kind of like not as far as what Steve and Aquila did as far as, you know, when we did land use 101, but just a quick and dirty review of the liquor approval process and the types of permits? Just, just basic training, if you will, on this so that, you know, we, we know what we're talking about?
Mayor, that should not be a problem. I can work on that.
This way, you know, once we're getting informed, as you were saying, then we can make other decisions that, that would better advise, you know, better inform us of what we would like to do next.
Love that. Thank you, thank you very much. And, and I'm not trying to be anti-business. My concern is if a business has it and they're not carding, they're not following the rules about how much they're serving for, how many people. Like those are some concerns I have as well. So I really appreciate everyone listening. Thank you very much.
Because I know, we've had discussions in the past, I know with Chief Pickering, and, you know, it's not the police department's role to enforce these rules, it's OLCC's. And I, as Chief has told me, there's not a lot of OLCC folks out there running around. If they are, they also have marijuana shops they're looking into, too. So, and the days of Eagle Scouts doing the stop-ins and stuff like that, then, you know, make sure people are checking IDs and do what they're supposed to do have, you know, stop happening.
And can I just another, would that affect our, sometimes we get taxes or money from, you know, fees or, I mean, would that affect? I would like to know that, if any of those categories affect us in any way, like as that. As you prepare for the future, not today, so. It's kind of late, so I don't want to.
I'll work to obtain more information.
How that would affect us financially, too.
I mean, the, the critical thing here is the type of license issued. You know, the, I'll pick on, the Tuolton Liquor Store operates at one standard versus the Country Inn versus, you know, mom and dad's salon who's providing, you know, beer and wine. All right, any other Council Communications?
Do your thing, Cindy.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those who favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Have a good evening.